Call the meeting to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, council member Leach is absent. Approval of the agenda, is there any additions to the agenda? Council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shallen.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Prove of the minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. They were included in your packet. Is there any questions or corrections? To be made within those minutes? Council have anything?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion by Diane to approve the October sixteenth minutes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? State your name and full address.
Matthew Schmitz, two twenty Oak Street. Chief Jensen stated that my case was unique because I never filed a formal complaint, but all of you know that wasn't true. Your city administrator, Vicki Willer, refused to file my complaint. I don't want to be here and I didn't want to make this public, but I am tired of the games. This child's allegation came as a surprise to no one involved. Your officer Dustin Von Waldy was warned over and over that he was placing the child in danger, and worse, he was encouraging children to have inappropriate relationships, and he did it anyways. He was supposed to bring this child to a licensed foster care provider, but instead he had the child pack their bags and drove the child to live with the child's romantic interest. The family called him over and over, he kept saying that he placed the child in a licensed foster home. The family kept saying, we know that you didn't. They are posting videos on TikTok smiling and dancing in front of the house of their love interest. You did not place this child in a licensed foster home, the child is in danger, you need to remove this child from the home immediately. But Von Waldy kept saying no, and then the day came, the child reported being abused in the home. After Von Waldy got caught with this child allegation, he immediately placed this child in another dangerous home and encouraged the child to pursue another romantic relationship with a new child. He did this to control the child, to manipulate the child, and to please the county in order to get that promotion that was so important to him. To Dustin Von Waldy, this child is nothing but a stain on his boots. To this day, he has not offered a single dime to help fix the three thousand two hundred dollars in damages to this child's teeth. And Chief Jensen says, we're not trying to cover anything up here, there's nothing to investigate. It's a spit in the child's face. Joe Jensen didn't investigate anything, he didn't even interview the victim's parents, and now we see that he's willing to lie to the entire city to protect Von Waldy. Can Jensen even explain why Von Waldy was allowed to place this child to live in a home with another child so that they could pursue their romantic relationship? And when that relationship ended with one child's allegation that something awful happened, why is Von Waldy not responsible? He knew about the relationship and he encouraged it, and to no one's surprise, the child got hurt. Then Von Waldy took the child and placed them in another home to have a new relationship, and the child got hurt again. This time what happened to the child was any parent's worst nightmare, and it was very bad. Why should Von Waldy not be held accountable for what he did to this child and what he put this child through? He was responsible for the child being abused twice. This is exactly why I asked for an outside department to come in and do an actual investigation, to ask questions and to get answers, but Jensen doesn't want to do that. He doesn't want to do anything for this child.
Do you have a moment for a question?
Sure.
Uh, you know, you've made these comments multiple times of Officer Von Waldy encouraging inappropriate behavior between the child and the interest in that household, um, do you have any evidence supporting that accusation?
Mister, uh, the officer was fully informed at the time this was happening, what the situation was, what was going on. After the child made the allegation at the CAC, there was a meeting with the social worker.
I'm asking, I'm asking if you, he, you have evidence that he encouraged them to engage in a romantic relationship? Is there, is there a recording?
Relationship.
I'm not asking if he was fully aware of your accusation.
Child with that relationship.
Do you have anything in black and white proving?
Is there a transcript, is there a recording, um, anything that would support your accusations against Officer Von Waldy? That he encouraged the child to engage in that romantic relationship?
Again, we have all the proof in the world, he was in that meeting with the Stearns County Attorney's Office, with the Guardian Lightums, with the social workers, they were all aware of this relationship. They all agreed to keep this child in this house. They all agreed that no one would file a report or do an investigation on this child's allegation that they were abused. And after the child got abused again, again, no one investigated it, no one reported it.
What organization would be responsible for that investigation if Child Protective Services was in that meeting?
Say again?
You're claiming this is Officer Von Waldy's responsibility, Child Protective Services was in that meeting and aware of that. Uh, you, your initial was that Officer Von Waldy didn't comply as a mandated reporter when you first spoke to the council. The agency you would report to is the Child Protective Services, so who or what responsibility would Officer Von Waldy have in, in this, from a legal standpoint and in your perspective then?
He was there, he heard the child's allegation of abuse.
As did the other agencies. As did the other agencies, correct? No? So Child Protective Services was not in that room then?
Yes, they were in the room.
Okay, so who would, who would he have investigated or reported that to then?
He should have filed a police report. There's no reason in this world why a police officer hearing an allegation like that would not file a police report.
Do you have the proof? That he didn't?
Yes, I've asked for it multiple times, it doesn't exist.
You know, basically what I'm getting to, and I thank Joe for his questions. We've heard this over and over, there is no proof, black and white, that our department did anything wrong. It went to Child Protective Services, it went into their jurisdiction, we were told, we're out. So we followed that, it's been investigated, and as far as I'm concerned, this is the last time that you will come in front of us and accuse anybody of anything.
Investigated it?
Child Protective Services. When they tell us that we are now out of the picture, we can't go double checking what they do. It's not our prerogative to do it.
Call an outside department to come in and investigate Von Waldy's actions?
Thank you for your comments, you can either leave or take a seat. But this is the last time we're bringing this in front of the council.
Well, I am so sorry that you don't like what Von Waldy did to this child being made public.
You have no proof. So, we're done, thank you.
The child was abused.
We're done.
There is proof of that.
Sir? We're done. Go sit down or leave.
I understand how you want this just to go away. Poof, we're gonna ignore it all.
This went before the Stearns County District Court, did it not?
Yes, it did.
Exactly.
He just didn't like the results, that's all.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Our public open forum is closed, we have no public hearings. We then move on to reports and presentations, EDA report?
So the EDA met today in regular session, had a couple things on their agenda to discuss. Uh, we've reviewed the information center development changes for a quick trip. Uh, this is mostly related to the storm pond, uh, there's new EPA guidelines going into effect regarding uh, fuel stations and stormwater ponds, so there'll be some changes with that. Uh, also looking at the tractor supply development changes, just trying to figure out how the future roadways will work and where the utilities will come from. Uh, we looked at the synergy energy project timeline, they're in another lease with their existing locations, we have some time yet. Maybe, I think there's two years left on that lease, and during that timeframe, look at those, that development. We have a lot sale in Author's Edition, that's an action item from your agenda tonight that they're recommending you approve. And also we're looking at inviting the grant writer from StanTech to a future meeting for a potential uh, small city development program grant application, potentially to upgrade some of the, uh, lower, lower income housing stock, or maybe some more commercial, we're not quite sure yet, we're gonna look at what those timelines for that grant are, so. Uh, we have the one recommendation tonight, and that is the sale of the Author's Edition lot.
Questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to our action items, seven A, approve appointment of patrol officer?
Uh, the personnel committee interviewed a prospective candidate for the vacant patrol officer position on Thursday, October twenty-fourth. Uh, following the interview, the committee recommends the position be offered to Landon Gadeem. The position start, to start in January, and contingent upon an updated background check, medical and psychological exam. Gadeem comes to the position with eight years of law enforcement experience, is an experienced canine handler, and a member of Stearns County SWAT. It is further recommend, recommended that he be offered pay at step eight, that's commensurate with his years of experience, and his vacation and sick leave be loaded with one week of vacation and twenty hours of sick. Um, so our action requested is to approve the appointment of Landon Gadeem at step eight, contingent upon successful background check, medical and psychological exam.
Questions, comments?
We're lucky to get him, I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Okay, we have a motion by Diane to approve the appointment of Landon Gudum?
Gadeem.
Gadeem, at step eight, contingent upon successful background check, medical and psychological exam. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven B, approve twenty twenty-five pay rates, ambulance department.
The ambulance department budgeted for a three percent pay rate for twenty twenty-five, this would apply to the administration wages along with the run and the training wages, and I did put the chart in your packet of what each of those pay rates are. Um, this is something that they budgeted and we've been kind of working on, on an annual basis, this is totally funded by the ambulance department itself. So we're looking to approve the pay rates for twenty twenty-five as presented.
Any questions, comments? It's all, that's budgeted, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane to approve the pay rates for twenty twenty-five as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven C, approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-five, awarding bid for ambulance remodel.
So with more ambulance personnel staying at the garage while on call, the department is questioning that the bedroom, which currently contains two beds, be remodeled into two bedrooms to give the privacy to those staying overnight, they essentially right, putting a dividing wall in the bedroom. So it would include the construction of that wall, insulate and finish, along with the removal of a closet to be reinstalled in the office area. So that includes all the finishing, painting, permit materials, and labor. We did get two quotes, we obtained from local contractors, Kastreba Contracting for seven thousand three hundred and ninety dollars was the low bidder. So we're looking to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-five, awarding the bid for the ambulance garage remodel.
Questions, comments?
I was just gonna ask, is there, seeming that the one is almost in half, that seems interesting. Is there something that's not included in that one that is in the other, or?
We looked at both of them and they were very similar, the only thing that we did have on the one said that it included garbage removal, but I'm pretty sure that that wouldn't make up for that difference, so.
Yeah, definitely.
The other one just was silent on that, generally when you remodel, you take everything away.
Yeah.
See Kathy's in here, Kathy, you wanna come up so everybody can hear? Um, you had mentioned something about that, uh, closet, that there's a possibility that was, could been changed or stayed in place?
Yeah, we have, uh, the proposed bids that we had, we explained that we wanted, there's a closet in between the office and the bedroom that exists now, straight on. We're gonna use that as a hallway to get into the second bedroom then, and then we're gonna put the closet in our office. But Tim and I were talking and we think we could just keep the closet in the alcove of our office where we're gonna build it, but put the door on the other side. Or, put the closet at the end of the hall and still have the doorway to the second bedroom, there'd still be enough room there. So little variations of that, but we have not talked to the contractors about that yet. So, that's something that we'll discuss with them later, it should be, I don't think, minimal cost to change the, the options there.
Okay, the reason why I bring it up is if we go and approve one contractor for a price, and then there's a change in it.
Yeah.
You're gonna be coming back to either tell us you've got it cheaper, or it's gonna be more.
Yeah, we haven't, that is not included in any of these quotes that they gave us at this time law.
Any other questions, concerns, what's the council's wishes?
I think this is all something we talked about budgeting last year, and I know we've talked about this project already, so I think it makes sense there with the needs that.
Yeah, there's a wide range here, you know, we got one at seventy-three ninety and the other one at thirteen-five.
Yeah.
So.
I'll make the motion to approve the award of the bid to Kastreba Contracting.
Okay, we have a motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven D, approve agreement with Bolton Mink for airport design services for hangar.
So the airport board has been working on potential projects for the future years, um, and one of those was the new box hangar out at the airport for the twenty twenty-five project. The, the fund, the hangar to be funded with bill funds and the NIPIS dollars. Uh, prior to beginning of the project, the city, city must first enter into an agreement for consulting service for the project with the airport consultant. The agreement to cover all phases of design up and through grant application, it also includes update on the DBE requirements, which is the disadvantaged business enterprise, uh, rules that we have to follow is one of our encumbrances to be eligible for those dollars. The total cost is based on a lump sum of seventy-five thousand, eligible for grant reimbursement of ninety-five percent. So we're looking to approve the consulting services proposal for the box hangar project with Bolton Mink.
Questions?
This price is just for the consulting services?
Hmm.
Yes.
And, and the other, other question I have is, in here it says up to ninety-five percent, is there a chance it'll be lower, or is?
Um, right now, that, the FAA funding at ninety-five percent, um, that's where they're at for twenty twenty-five projects.
All right.
You know, usually it's ninety percent, but, and we've usually been able to make up that extra five percent with MINDOT. So if MINDOT stays on track, we could actually end up paying two and a half percent instead of five.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve, approve consulting services proposal?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven E, approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-six, setting public hearing on cannabis registration ordinance.
So with legalization of the sale of cannabis, cities are required to register cannabis licenses and also ensure that licenses are issued only to businesses in the proper zoning district. In addition, cities with law enforcement personnel are required to conduct compliance checks at least annually on all licensed business. The first step in adhering with this new law is adoption of an ordinance implementing these provisions. I have attached a resolution which calls for a public hearing to be held on Wednesday, November twentieth, that's at our next regular city council meeting. In addition to this ordinance, the planning commission will be conducting a public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance to comply with the state statute. So the planning commission will be, um, amending the zoning ordinance to establish the zoning districts that the sale of cannabis can happen in. The city council will be adopting that ordinance and then also establishing an ordinance which would be setting, um, how many total maximum we will allow in town, and also to set up the procedures for the law enforcement compliance checks. So it's kind of a two-part thing, they'll both come to you on the twentieth for adoption. So we need to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-six, calling for the public hearing on cannabis retail registration and compliance checks.
Questions, concerns? Planning commission will be, that's at our next meeting on the twelfth.
Yes.
At four thirty, in case you're interested. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-six?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shallen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven F, approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-seven, amending HCSP contribution for non-union.
So as part of the benefit package for all employees, the full-time employees contribute two percent of their wages to a healthcare savings plan. So this is a payroll deduction from the employee, not an employer contribution. We have three separate agreements, one for the police, one for public works, and one for non-union. The non-union agreement is up for renewal, uh, no changes are proposed with the exception to clarify the participants. The existing resolution states non-union employees is recommended to change the language to full-time non-union employees to differentiate, differentiate from seasonal or part-time who are not part of the program. So it's basic, we've been operating it with the full-time non-union and they recommended to add the words full-time into it, just so we don't get caught up with the seasonal and part-time. So we'd like to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-seven, clarifying participation in healthcare savings plan for non-union employees.
Questions, concerns?
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-seven?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven G, approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-eight, approving gambling premises permit.
So the, we have in front of you now the resolution approving the gambling premise permit for the Sock Center Youth Hockey Association. This is to conduct pull tab activities at the next tour bar and lounge in Sock Center. This is resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight, approving that premise permit. In the past, you had to do these every year, now we issue the permit and then it automatically renews. Understand this will now be a shared site with the fire department, I think the fire department does the ETAPs and the youth hockey will do the physical paper tabs.
Okay.
Sorry, I keep looking at Joe to make sure I don't have that backward.
Yeah.
So we look for adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-eight, approving the gambling premise permit.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-eight?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Shallen, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries three in favor, none against, one abstention. Seven H, approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-nine, accepting bids for excess vehicles.
The Sock Center Police Department advertised for sealed bed, sealed bids for the sale of excess vehicles with the following results. We had a CR twenty-five, two fifty motorcycle dirt bike, went to Omen Manet for twelve hundred dollars. We have a two thousand twelve Infiniti sedan with no title, uh, which went to Scott Doc, Scott Drobny for two hundred dollars. So we're looking to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-nine, authorizing the sale of the excess vehicles.
Questions or comments?
With no title on that Infiniti, is that gonna pose a real problem? Cause it's gonna be hard to license it or insure it.
They're willing to take the risk, otherwise it was going out to Ken's Iron.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. Need a good boat anchor. Okay.
There's ways.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Diane, do approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-nine, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven I, approve purchase of computer server.
So our city computers operate off a centralized server, last updated in two thousand sixteen. We have since added an add-on for additional operation and storage, which that is now failing. So rather than purchase a new add-on and then a new larger service with, server within two years, we're recommending we purchase the new server large enough to cover both, both pieces. We'll, we'll put the add-on information now that's being operated on the failing server on it, and then we'll migrate the main server over to it as it becomes necessary. So Arvic provided specifications that would meet our needs and now into the future. We submitted those to Dell where we get the government discount with a final cost of five thousand six ninety-one sixty-one. So we would utilize the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five budget for that purpose, which is already budgeted for the server. So we're looking for approval of that purchase for the new main server for five six nine seven sixty-one.
Questions or comments?
Definitely needed.
Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of the server?
I mean, oh, I'll second it, Joe.
Okay. Joe made the motion, Diane seconded it. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven J, approve agreement with ISD seven forty-three for construction of cabins.
So two years ago, the park board recommended the city move forward with the installation of camper cabins at the campground. The city council did not move forward at that time, but there was discussion on whether the school industrial arts class would have an interest in providing labor. The class is now very interested in constructing two cabins for the city on their May, in their February to May class. They were provided with an outline of requirements and are willing to provide the labor for the exterior insulation, interior, and electrical, so pretty much move in ready to move over to our site. The city would provide the materials, we did get an estimate for materials per cabin for sixteen thousand one eighty-four. I did provide you a conceptual look of the exterior and an interior provided for your review, you can see what that would look like. The exterior, we, um, quoted out, the standing seam roof, it could become a shingle roof depending on final cost, but we estimate that cost is kind of the, the high side, so we'd be able to get that done. And the school is interested in doing it simply because they went away from constructing a house to constructing just your garden shed. Now they're more interested in doing something a little more complex, so that's where we're at. So, we are looking to approve the agreement, which ISD seven forty-three, to construct the cabins and authorize purchase of the materials.
Questions?
And this is for two?
We would, we would do two, they would, they wanna do two, so they have enough kids in their class that they can be working on them simultaneously.
The cost listed here is though per cabin, so it'd be thirty-two.
That's what I was, yeah.
Sixty-eight, total. And is, remind me, do we decide what, um, is this gonna take up two of the, or are we gonna get them both on one?
We would put the two on one campsite, remember we lost one campsite when we did the dock?
That's what I, that's what I was.
Still permitted to have, to have that, and now we'll get back that site by putting two cabins on that larger tent site.
In the picture, it shows that, that steel roof, but I was just wondering if, are we gonna kind of go with that same concept?
That's what we, we specked out for that material.
Okay.
We'll just see what the final cost comes in.
Just so they know there's no exposed fasteners.
It's the standing seam.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agreement with ISD seven forty-three?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion with Shallen, do I second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven K, approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety-one, authorizing sale of Author's Edition lot.
So, uh, last Friday, I was able to get a purchase agreement signed for lot three, block one of Author's Edition. You can see it on the map there, the schematic, it's the one that backs up to the storm pond. And we were looking for a closing in the first half of December for that. So we're looking to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety-one, authorizing the execution of all documents for the sale of lot three, block one, Author's Edition.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety-one?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Unfinished business, trunk highway seventy-one reconstruction.
Just a couple things, we keep moving forward and closer to the trunk highway seventy-one reconstruction project. There's several times that crews will be on-site conducting surveys, as you know, we went through that whole bike lane survey, then we went through the handicap accessible survey, now it's the archaeological survey looking for relics. So MINDOT contacted, contracted with Bolton Mink to conduct that survey. Uh, you'll be seeing areas where they'll be digging potholes in the right-of-way alongside the highway. These are like a twelve-inch pothole, three, three feet deep, if they find anything, they could expand that to like three feet wide by three feet deep. Uh, they will be wearing a. wide by three feet deep. They will be wearing identification. They'll be carrying credentials. So if anybody, anybody sees that out there doing that, that's what's, what's going on is it's a MINDOT crew, although Bolton Mink is gonna be conducting the work. As they do that, they'll be doing that the fall of twenty-four into the spring of twenty-five. They'll submit those findings. In the meantime, they have been working with our city engineer to get all our requirements as what we, what they can expect from us for the project for all the underground utilities and everything we'll be responsible for. So we should start seeing some of that come together in the coming months. So it's slow, but it's a slow process, but we're getting there.
Questions or concerns about that? All right. Twenty twenty-five project, Eighth Street South?
Keith Yap was gonna be here tonight. He called and wasn't able to make it. He did provide you with a proposed alignment for Eighth Street South. I believe I emailed that to you earlier. He was just kind of looking for some comments on that. This shows that it can all fit within our existing right-of-way. And he said if he just kind of get the nod on that, he'll kind of design that in. That doesn't mean it can't be changed at a later date. But this is kind of what we're looking for as far as making that kind of square off, that approach onto Highway seventy-one and kind of calm the traffic flow and, and the speed that goes through there. I don't know if you want to provide him with some thoughts on that, or if you have any questions for him, I can relate to him.
Anybody have any comments or anything? I do like the idea of how it's coming off a main street that they, you know, it's not that swooping curve going up. It's actually turn off a main street and then follow.
Right.
Up. You're, you're not gonna be able to hit that at thirty miles an hour like that road is now.
Yeah.
If you want to. So.
Looks good.
I would, in my opinion, proceed with that.
I agree.
Yep, I agree.
It's like a general consent to go that way.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. HC, building improvement bids?
Just a reminder that we will be opening bids on November third, possibly with an award at the December sixth meeting.
Thirteenth.
Pardon me? What did I say?
November third.
Oh, well, thirteenth, sorry. Yesterday was a long day. So anyway, that's for the membrane roof for the arena and city hall, the shingle roof for city hall and the air handling unit at city hall. So kind of if anybody wants to come, it's at ten-thirty on the thirteenth. You're certainly welcome to come and observe that bid opening.
Okay. Any questions about that? Then we will move on to new business, set meeting to canvas votes for general election.
Because we had candidates, city had candidates on the ballot, the city council must certify the results to officially adopt them. This is to be done between three and ten days after an election. So we need to set a date where you can convene and take action. And so it'll have to be next week because we don't have three days from now to call a special meeting. I'm kind of recommending probably Tuesday, November twelfth, or earlier in the day on Wednesday. I suppose either one of them next week would work. I do have to have a minimum of three of you there. It's like a five-second meeting to, to do that.
I will be miles and miles away all of next week. So I'm out of the equation.
Zoom in.
I don't even have that.
I'll be around.
I'd, I'd be available on the twelfth. What do we want to do, like around lunchtime or is something you want to do just right after workday?
We can do it.
Planning commission at four-thirty. We could do it like right at, just prior to that, you know?
You know, if we'd come in here at four o'clock on the twelfth and planning commission would be at four-thirty. So.
Okay. Four o'clock on the twelfth?
That way it doesn't disrupt people's workdays or lunch or anything like that. So.
I should be able to accommodate that.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay.
I can do it tomorrow.
All right. That date is set. Summer rec agreement with ISD seven forty-three, request for renewal.
This is kind of an updated information that in twenty, remember in two thousand two, the city moved away from providing summer rec and instead contributed to the school for some of the sports. We renewed that agreement several times. The last time we renewed it was in twenty twenty. At that time, the council and the school agreed that if it came up for renewal again, that they would have discussion on whether a portion of the funds should be allocated to others, or if the contribution should be reevaluated or if the contribution should be discontinued. So the school did reach out to me for twenty twenty-four funds, and I had sent this old agreement back to them. So they were aware of it. And he said he's gonna provide a request to me sometime next week. So I don't know if, if a couple of you want to meet with them, or if we just want to bring it back to a full council for consideration. The existing agreement terminated last year in twenty twenty-three. So kind of where we're at with that. You know, since I typed this up, is I heard that he was planning to make a, send in a letter next week, or maybe we just do it on the twentieth at the meeting. It's up to you how you want to handle it.
Okay. Comments on that?
I do know we budgeted nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four already. That's, that's allocated twenty-four. We didn't, but twenty-five didn't have it in there, but I looked back, twenties fours did actually have it in there, even though we wouldn't have had the signed agreement. I certainly believe in helping fund these activities for our youth in their community and stuff there. Certainly, obviously, we're near the end of twenty-four. So obviously kind of forgot about it and that the agreement had terminated, I guess, in, in some parts for the groups. But personally, I think we, we move ahead that since we allocated for it, and again, I think it's something appropriate to help fund these activities for our youth.
Yeah. You, since we did budget it for twenty twenty-four, but we did also give the school twenty-five thousand toward.
Yeah.
Pickleball court. So to me, they got there nine thousand.
That's a, that's a different debate, I think. But, you know, certainly our, our youth programs and these activities and things that would help make sure they can run all these programs versus a specific group, which actually is, is a demographic that our youth probably aren't utilizing the pickleball to the level that our senior community would be. But again, that's, that's another conversation, I think.
Right.
We'll get his, we'll get his letter and I'll circulate it so you guys can have a conversation about it.
And I know things happen, but when it comes to having paperwork in order, I wouldn't think you'd wait a whole year after the fact and not, and then come in with, on your knees and ask, we need nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, I agree.
Didn't that happen on the pickleball court, though?
That was a spur, that was a spur of the moment. Different discussion, Joe, just like you said.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, we'll just have him get the letter to you and we'll decide.
He said that he provided the participation statistics. We haven't received those since two thousand nineteen. So he's gonna bring those up to date, too.
Right. Okay. Ten C, request for crosswalk signals.
Holy Family School contacted the city with a request for a crosswalk signal similar to what's installed on seventy-one by the post office and Jitters and also the one by the dam. So we did update the quote for that machine or that, that unit and total cost with posts is ten thousand eight hundred and five. That has been communicated back to Holy Family School. I think they're gonna do, have some discussion on it. There's nothing for us to do right now, just to make you aware that that conversation is out there. And it might be something that can happen next year, maybe. I don't know, depending on how, how they come back to us if they're able to participate in any way. So just information only on that one.
Would this be the crosswalk that would be like on the east side where, not on the, closer to the church, but the one where they usually have their.
I understand it would be by Holy Family School corner and across Sinclair.
Okay.
Where they have the school guard crossing usually?
Yeah.
Goes to corners.
Yeah, I was just confirming that. I just want to make sure that I understood that's where they wanted it.
They, when I communicated the cost back to them, they didn't expect it to be quite that high. And I think these, the ones that Ben had discussed are solar ones, which will work better because talking with the PUC, they said that right now the wiring is all hooked with the streetlights. They go on at a certain time, they'll go off. If you run, hook it to those wires at a certain time at night, they're gonna shut off. They're gonna come on. They all work at night, but they ain't gonna work during the day when the streetlights aren't on. So it'd be a whole different wiring.
And yeah, these are, these are solar powered. So they're individually powered and then they're Bluetooth communicated. So if you push the button on the one side of the street, they both go off.
Right.
So same like the ones.
Exactly the ones we have.
Any other comments on that? Otherwise, we will move on to our consent agenda. I've got an updated consent agenda here. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of four hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents, paid claims of forty-three dollars and eleven cents, for a total of four hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and five cents. We have resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety, accepting contributions of seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents from the men's card playing group to be allocated to the senior center, and an aluminum handicap ramp to be donated from Alice Kinney to be used for the red schoolhouse up on the north end. And on behalf of the city and the council, I want to thank those two groups for their donation. We have a gambling application for exempt permit requests from Holy Family School for a raffle on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at Holy Family School, and a gambling application for exempt permit requests from Sox Center Snowcleats for a raffle on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at the Snowcleats Clubhouse. Is there any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Shallen will second it. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Informational items?
Just a couple items. The following public works employees will advance to step two of the public works union pay scale on November twenty-seventh. That's Andrew Durkis and Jeff Peters. They'll be reaching their anniversary date. And then also we have the spectrum channel lineup changes attached. And that's what I have.
Okay. Is there any questions about either of those two items? If not, it's reached the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Shallen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.